And we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm looking for an approval of the agenda. Still looking for an approval of the agenda.
I'm going to find the agenda first.
Oh, okay.
Here. Okay. For discussion purposes, I'm going to approve the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a second? Thank you, Doug. We have now opened it up for changes and additions and subtractions to the agenda. I did want to bring up that our superintendent search coordinator, her consultant could not had another commitment tonight, and I just want everyone to know she's not going to be here for the superintendent search process piece. And that was all I had. Does anybody else have any changes? Okay, hearing none. I will call the question then. If you're in favor of the agenda as presented with that single change, please raise your hand. All right, thank you very much. Public input and announcements. We did not have any public sign up, so we...
Gail did raise her hand.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Gail.
Hi. Being virtual, I can see the board members that are online, but I don't know who's in the room.
Oh.
Okay. I will tell you.
Okay, thanks.
Doug Earl is in the room, Len Doucette, Matt Gausberg, BJ Barron, and myself. And Brian Hill is here too, as well as...
All right, thank you. So Adrienne's not there?
No, she's not.
Okay, thank you.
She does normally attend virtually, but I don't see her on. Were there any other public comments? Nope, okay. Then we will go to approval of minutes because obviously there's no board discussion of public comments because there weren't any. So approval of minutes from 1-19-2022. Is there a motion? Thank you, Matt. Second? Thank you, BJ. Are there any changes, additions to the minutes that were sent to us for review?
I have a question. On number 11, I think I brought this up at the Monday meeting. It says Ann Poston will call for application deadline of February 11, and we had said we were going to continue to take applications through the interview process, and Jackie verified that Monday.
This is true. Yep, we'll fix that, Bruce. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Anything else? Okay. All right, then, all in favor of the agenda, or the agenda, the minutes as corrected, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. We need to make a town meeting moderator appointment. Brian?
Yeah, and I'll say this, we have somebody who has expressed interest, and I've been trying to connect with them. It's, I believe, a parent in Wallingford. I haven't been able to connect with them. Just they've been busy, I've been busy. I think it's worth discussion tonight, though, about some of the information that I dug up about the process and why we want to appoint somebody. I did dig a little bit in statute, and I did reach out to the Secretary of State Office, and I spoke to somebody in the Elections Division. And what they confirmed was we do have two paths. We could appoint somebody ahead of the town meeting day, and that would be within the Board's powers and duties to appoint that person. Or we could wait, and the evening of the meeting, you could have the clerk fill that. You could have somebody from the floor called up to fill that role. But the Secretary of State's office feedback was that the most legal way to do it would be to appoint somebody, so it might be in our best interest to do that. That's something that we could call a special meeting and do if we don't appoint somebody tonight.
We do have the meeting on the 16th that's still on the books.
We do? Why was I missing that? Okay.
Well, because we usually don't have two meetings because we count the annual meeting, but there's so much stuff going on, we just sort of talked about that.
So then, what I might recommend to the Board is a brief discussion around how do you want to identify the person to appoint. And then, I think it's within your legal rights, and actually, the statute says that it should be filled. You should not let too much time lapse. I think in the instance of the moderator, well, there are no duties for them to fulfill until we get to the annual meeting, so it's not as big a concern. But the statute does give some emphasis to doing that quickly. So I think trying to find somebody is a good idea, and appointing them maybe on the 16th. So that's what I was able to figure out.
That all makes sense. Do you think you'll be able to touch base with that person before the 16th? Maybe leave them a message saying...
I have a conversation with them Friday scheduled.
Oh, great.
We're going to touch base. And they had expressed willingness to do it. They're a local attorney, and they're a Wallingford parent. But I didn't know if the Board wanted to, if the Board was comfortable with that, or if the Board wanted to think about, you know, if you had anybody you knew, anybody in mind. I didn't want that to be a foregone conclusion on my end.
Hmm, I don't know. I mean, I don't have anybody in mind. Has anybody else had any contact with anybody that expressed interest in being moderator?
No.
Okay, I guess pursue the person you've been told and bring it, hopefully bring them to us next meeting.
Absolutely, I can do that.
Okay, so moderator, sorry. And then we have the superintendent search process. I don't, I don't know, there are other people here that were also on the search committee. I don't really have a whole lot to report, other than we've had, our, the ad is up, we've started to get applications. I don't know how many there are currently. We're, the superintendent search committee is in the process of developing questions, you know, to ask all of the applicants once we start that part of it. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that...
I think the big thing is the website.
And the superintendent website.
Yeah, we have a website posted on, so if you go to milrowerschools.org and click on the superintendent search, it'll bring you to a website. It lists all of our meetings that we're doing, that we are having for, that the search committee is posting. There is public comment area. We have tried to make it as accessible as possible for commenting, so we have a Google form, we have a voicemail number you can call, we reposted the address to the school.
We have an email address.
Thank you, Anne has even posted it in the chat.
Yep, we have an email address.
We have an email address specifically for this. We've had one public meeting already, we have another one scheduled, and that's all preliminary before we even get the finalists. I think, yeah, even the second one's going to be...
Yes.
And then, once we have the finalists, then we're going to provide even more information about contacting, especially with the public and things like that, and stakeholders for being able to connect with them. So we are taking feedback right now.
On what we want to see in our next superintendent, what qualities, what skills is basically what we've been asking for.
There are those three questions, if they go to the site.
Yep.
That that's kind of, I mean, just to let folks know that that's kind of what we're starting with.
Right. And that was how the forum was set up the other night. We asked the same three questions, and those are the same three questions that are on that website to answer. But certainly, if you want to send an email, or leave a message, or whatever, with more, you know, with something other than just the answers to those three questions, you're welcome to do that. And we will be reading and listening to all of those. I don't really have much else to do on that. Does anybody have any other, anybody online that has any comment? Okay.
The next public forum, I think it's going to be the 21st, which is during vacation, and it'll be completely virtual, but...
It will be completely virtual.
It will be completely virtual, so...
And there will be an agenda, as usual, with the web address.
Oh, and the previous one is recorded and posted.
Oh, you did post it, okay.
Yes.
So if anybody wants to listen to what was said at the forum, that would be, where to find it? Okay, we have, do we have student representatives online?
I think I might have seen all three online.
Okay, you have the floor, the three of you, or whoever's here.
Maybe just two.
Sometimes they're together.
Yeah, all three of us are on right now.
Okay.
We don't have much really to discuss right now. We've been trying to set up meetings with students who have concerns or anything they didn't want us to mention on the meeting. One thing I'd like to mention is the new cell phone policy. I don't see a real problem with it, other than the fact that it seems teachers and staff members are more concerned about students being on the cell phone rather than wearing their masks correctly. I have seen more kids hold not to, all right, to put their phone away, and when they have their mask down beneath their nose, or even beneath their mouth, because it's irritating knowing that cell phones are more the priority of kids getting spoken to than the masks and COVID and everything.
Okay, that's a little bit concerning. Thanks.
Also, since Chris and I have been, since we started on this, since we first started on this schoolwork, we have been talking to Mr. Weidman and Ms. Thompson, and we want to get, I don't know, and we want to get, we want to get, like, each grade's input of concerns, so we want to talk to them during, like, flex block in the auditorium, whoever wants to sign up. And we have been trying to do that, but every, every single time they say, so they say, um, I don't know, so, yeah, so every single time we try to make time for it, it gets canceled. And we were supposed to meet with students today during flex block, but Ms. Thompson and Mr. Weidman were busy. So it's just really irritating because it keeps getting canceled, and so that's why we don't have anything to bring up to the meeting. And I told her, I emailed her, and I said, like, we haven't eaten today, and now we don't have anything to talk about. She said, unfortunately, we have something going on, and we can't eat with you guys. And so we just, like, don't have stuff to talk about. Like, we try to get things, like, yeah, we just stuff, we just want to, um, get things going, like, meeting with students, doing other things. We bring that up to them, and then it just, all of a sudden, doesn't happen, and we, like, we don't know how to help the school or anything because it, or given what, because nobody, the teachers or adults are doing anything. So it's hard for us to do our job when they're not doing theirs.
Okay, well, you know, the other part of your job is to report back to the student body what we're saying, so...
Yeah.
You can get that part, go ahead, BJ.
Yeah, and I was going to say, thank you for bringing up the concern. We value your input in our conversations here, too, just in general, because we are not in the building, we're not in the building. We are not a student. So your input, I mean, even if you have to say we have nothing to really need to report, it's fine, but we definitely want to hear your opinions in the conversations we're having here.
Right, you can raise your hand, just like we can.
So there's more than what, just bringing in, so...
Yeah. If there's comment, if I say, does anybody have a comment, feel free to raise your hand because you're a member of the Board.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I guess we weren't clear on that, sorry. Go ahead, Lacey. Lacey, do you, if you have something to say, you have to unmute.
I must be having a problem with the interrupt.
Okay, well...
All right, yeah, sorry, I'm here now.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so I do know that, just like Sydney and Chris, we don't have much to report back right now. Unfortunately, we're going to try and meet us three, and then meet with some students, hopefully, in the near future. But I do know a big problem that a lot of students have been talking about throughout the school is definitely guidance. And I feel like that's been a topic for a while, but there's just, like, there's problems with kids, like, having meetings about college, and they need help with their essays, they need help with certain things like that, and guidance doesn't have enough time for that because they're just dealing with disciplinary issues, which is totally, like, acceptable. I mean, there's kids that need help in the school, and obviously, that's more important. But it's going to be, like, where kids aren't getting the help they need to be prepared for college, or they need help with their schedule and stuff like that. So I think it's, like, it's something we need to work on through the school, and I know people have talked about it a lot, but there hasn't been a change. I know for me, I'm doing early college next year, and guidance has helped some with that, but there's little to no direction. And I mean, I've never done this before, I've never signed up for this before, so it's hard for me to know what to do when I don't have direction like that. Like I said, they're doing their best, and it's obviously not the teacher's fault, they have so many kids to worry about. But I think there does need to be a change in that, because obviously, there's kids that need help signing up for certain things, and it's just because other kids aren't behaving, or because they need help, that's getting taken away from the other students. I don't know how to fix that issue, but I do know it is an issue, and we do need to take action on that.
Thank you, Lacey. Mr. Hill heard you.
Absolutely.
So your message got through.
No, thank you, that was, that was...
Informative.
Helped all of us, very informative.
Exactly the type of information we look to get from our students.
Okay, are you guys, I guess you're complete. We have COVID dynamics update.
Yep, and there's not been a lot of, not been a lot happening since the last board meeting. Last board meeting, I think we had some of our biggest changes we had seen yet, because we hit that January 1 period where a lot of things started to roll back in our guidance from the state. We've transitioned a little bit, we've shifted our communication strategy a little bit, so that we are, we are trying not to bombard people with information, but we're trying to make the information available for them so that they have what they need. We were in a great position to send test kits home with staff last Friday. Every staff member got two, and that was made available, if not put in their mailboxes. They were encouraged to seek them out in the office. Some folks just don't have mailboxes, so it's hard to distribute to everybody. Monday and Tuesday of this week, all students brought tests home regardless of vaccination status. So we've been in a reasonable position with the amount of tests that have been coming in, and how we, how we made them available, the folks that needed them for the beginning of January, and we didn't, we didn't go crazy with them. We have a little bit of a storehouse of tests, so that we are, I think, in better position than some other places, where, I don't know if you've heard, other districts have closed down because they didn't have the tests that they needed to do some of the programs that the state was offering. We have enough tests that what we're going to do is we're going to wait and see what we get from the Agency of Education next, and likely in a week or two, send more tests home. Because our goal is that caregivers at home can have enough tests to use them as needed when needed, and that they won't have to be picking them up from school the next day, or having to be coming home the next day, that they'll just be, they'll be at home, they'll be available, they'll be ready. February break is coming up, so we definitely want to make sure that folks have tests on hand at home, so that whatever happens over February break, that they will be prepared to come back to school the following Monday. So I think, I think the health office has done a good job of getting folks what they need, but also keeping an eye on the future and thinking about how can we make sure everybody has tests and facilitate that. So that's where we are. I see the state signaling more and more, and you're probably seeing this too, if you're tuning into some of the press conferences, that schools' involvement in pandemic management is shrinking, and there are things that we're being told not to do, actually. For example, it's been made very clear, we are not to deny entry to school to any asymptomatic students. And I think that's, that's worth sharing, because that's, I think that's a big deal. I think that's a big deal. It is no longer our job to police tests, to police vaccination status or anything. Really, we are, we are handing out resources in our test kits, and we are doing the best we can to keep folks safe here, masking and notifying when we do have those presumptive positives. But our hands are really, our, our hands are tied in that we're not really enforcing or regulating any of this. We're just trying to do the best we can, keeping everybody healthy, as, as things shift from a school responsibility to a family responsibility, if that makes sense. Interestingly, regional superintendents were thinking, gosh, when are masks going to shift from the state? So folks think that that might be coming in a few months as spring gets here and case counts continue to go down. I just, I don't say that for any other reason, except for folks to be aware that those are conversations that are happening. We'll have to have that conversation ourselves when we get there, but I think it's worth knowing that that, that might be on the horizon. What questions do folks have about that?
I have a question.
Yep.
I asked this to put on with the COVID policy.
Yep.
And that changed in light of the Supreme Court ruling as far as vaccinations. I got two questions, actually.
Yep, so the...
Vaccinations testing.
Yep, the side agreement, I actually was talking with union presidents today. They're doing some work with their folks to decide how they feel about renegotiating that agreement. That agreement is in effect through June 30, so if we do nothing, it goes away. But we can renegotiate that agreement. So we are, we are in the midst right now of talking through what that might look like. Do you have another question, Bruce?
No, I was, I was just, I think when we put that policy in effect way back in the fall...
Yep.
Everybody thought if you were inoculated...
Yep.
You wouldn't get COVID.
Yep.
And so...
Things changed.
If you, if you got COVID, you went home, you got your days off, and you were fine.
Yep.
But if somebody wasn't inoculated...
Yep.
They end up losing money from their salary.
Yep. You know, and something else, something else, Bruce, the agreement specifically mentions PCR testing, and right now, we do not have, we do not have a lot of recommendations or requirements for PCR testing. The majority of what we're looking at right now, all the tests, the tests to stay that we were doing were all rapid tests. Now that that's shifted to test at home, and we're sending those kits home, those are rapid tests, too. So I think it's worth revisiting the agreement, even just in light of the guidance changing around testing. You know, we're still asking folks to do PCR tests, but that doesn't really line up with what we're expecting of our students or families right now, if that makes sense. So I think it's, it's worth revisiting, and we're trying to do that work.
I have a question.
Yeah, good question, thank you, Bruce.
I see you're still reading, or did you have more to share?
No, I was, I was kind of scanning faces to see if anybody looked like you were going to ask a question. Sorry.
That's okay. Then, because I don't see any other questions either. We have on the agenda, review new board member handbook, and I don't know whether that was Maria, you were, you were instrumental in making that handbook up. Do you know where, what, what status it's in right now?
Yeah, thanks, Adrian. I, I have it as one of my docs, and I've shared it with the full Board several times. And what I'm in the process of doing now, ahead of being officially off the Board at the end of the month, is transferring ownership of all my documents to Community Engagement Committee, so then it will be able to be accessed by them, and I am happy to reshare that document with everybody.
Could you make sure that Brian has that, as he will probably be the person who touches base with all of the new board members when they come on?
Absolutely, and I intend to have a conversation with Brian in the next week or so.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll make sure that...
All right.
...part of what we're talking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I, you know, I wanted to stress that we're going to, you know, hopefully, whoever is here in, in March will stress for new board members to take part in, you know, both reading the, the new, you know, board member handbook that is specific to our district, but also to take part in the VSBA trainings that really give people an understanding of what their legal responsibilities are in terms of being a board member. And that information will be shared.
I have a quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
Number nine, COVID updates.
Yep.
In my version, I have substitute available pay in parentheses. Was there an extra conversation with that?
Yeah, sorry, actually, and I wonder, Jody, do you have that information, the substitute information? That, a question was asked at the last board meeting. I totally forgot about that. Thank you, BJ.
And I read it, too.
Do you have that? So a thank you to Anne DeJes, who has, like, a statewide network that she asks questions to. She sent out a survey to other people in her position, just saying, can you just fill this out with what you pay substitute paras and teachers? So 33 responses from various districts around the state came in for that. The overall average was about 110 a day per teacher, and very close for para, a little bit under, like, 108, 107. And it ranged from 145 to 95 throughout the state. The most interesting thing is most districts pay the same rate for both positions. And I'm thinking maybe that's just because a different rate makes it kind of harder. If you have multiple openings, people will choose, obviously, the thing that pays more. But I do have all of that data, if any board members want to see it or talk more about it.
I guess the question for, for Brian, or Jody, for me, is, is the substitute availability gotten any less tight, I guess is the term? I mean, I know, as part of negotiations, not, you know, spilling any, any secrets, that that's one of the teachers' concerns. Yes, they have days, and the paras, too, they have days to use, but, but they don't necessarily feel comfortable using them if they know there's not going to be a substitute and that all of their fellow teachers might have to fill in to cover the class.
Yeah, so we, we have not gained any new substitutes lately. Our absence has gotten a lot...
Maybe one, maybe one, as of, like, what, Anne, yesterday? No? Okay.
No, that's a good thought.
And it is, it is a significant obstacle, it's a significant obstacle to getting the teachers together to do the collaborative work that really helps them to serve students. It, you know, it's a significant obstacle for instruction, because we do have circumstances in which, like, three classes have to go into one room, and then really, you know, you're playing botbit to try to get everyone to be working on something, but we are doing our best everywhere we possibly can.
Did the survey, or did anybody give comment on, on where other districts are? I mean, I'm assuming that we're all, you know, sort of in the same boat, but have any, has anybody figured out a, a better solution?
No, so this is something that I talk about with my peers in the same position as me regularly when we meet. It is, there's a severe shortage of subs, there's a shortage of teachers, there is a shortage of administrators for the multiple openings around, and, and it's something that we're all experiencing. A lot of the districts near us use Kelly Services for their subbing, and even going through, an agency has not been significantly more helpful.
Actually, we had found that...
It's just about recruiting, it's about culture, it's about making people feel, like, seen and valued and appreciated in this field, and competitive pay.
Yeah.
Ryan, would you add anything to that?
The only thing I'd add is, is this interesting scenario where, I know, Adrian, you, you mentioned folks who maybe could use a day, and they choose not to. I...
folks who maybe could use a day, and they choose not to. I remember those days in the classroom where you felt a little bad and you came in, because it was easier to come in. Now we have times where people can't come in, and we're telling them, no, you can't come in. You're coughing, you have to go home. And I think part of our struggle is, we didn't lose all of our subs, but the number of subs that we had, we were barely making it before, and now our absences have skyrocketed through no educator's fault. It's this COVID thing where you got to be out for five days because you got it. So that's the way that goes. And I think because of the number of absences, it's incredibly challenging to keep up. We were having a tough time before, and now it's just, it's impossible without another teacher covering, an administrator jumping in and covering. Like Jody said, we're doing everything we can to keep school in session, but it's not always ideal. It's not. Our students deserve better, and I don't know that we know how to do that when it comes to subs yet.
Brian, I'll just add from the special education side, because I do want to comment on that. We have children with intensive needs for whom there are no trained or qualified staff to support them, so they do not come to school on those days when their designated staff people are out.
Yeah.
That's where we're at.
And that's problematic.
That is highly, highly frustrating and problematic, but that's happening on a daily basis at this point. So I just want to say that in hopes of emphasizing the crisis situation that is happening.
And yesterday morning, regional superintendents, I was having a conversation, and some folks are saying, I don't know how I'm going to have schools open next year, because they're worried about their regular staff and the numbers of people who might be leaving the profession. We haven't had that conversation yet, thank goodness. We might be down a position or two. I know special ed is probably going to be down a lot more, but our regular ed ranks, we're not looking too terrible right now, but I think some other folks are. And that's a kind of scary thing to think, if we were down four teachers in a building, how do we do that, even when all this pandemic goes away? You know, so staffing's a concern. It is. But we like to think we take care of our folks, and we try to, we try to take care of them in a way that they feel like they belong here and can make a difference here, and that's how we keep them. We don't always get it right all the time, but we have to do that work, because the field is running out of qualified candidates, unfortunately.
I was at a Stafford meeting this morning, and actually, Ann was there, too. And one of the things they were discussing was that pipeline, even just to the, you know, to the sub level, that as part of their human services programs, that they might be trying to work on filling the need for, you know, sending people in the direction of being a teacher, sending them straight to being a para, you know, with some training at Stafford. So I mean, it's being looked at at lots of levels.
That's good.
Because I think it is a statewide and probably now nationwide systemic problem.
Yeah, I can attest that it's a problem in the school district I work for, too.
I haven't heard from anybody where it's not a problem.
Yeah.
I mean, even back, you know, before COVID and before that, in Shrewsbury, you know, we had tried Kelly Services, because we always had difficulty getting subs, and it didn't improve things at all. I mean, it just, you know, it added another layer in there, but it didn't really help us staff any better, which was frustrating. But yeah, thank you, BJ, for reminding us to have that conversation. I hope there's some solutions out there. We have the bylaws review now on the agenda. And I'm not sure how. Are people prepared to work on that for a few minutes?
I can tell you where you stopped.
Okay.
And I can pull them up on the screen.
Where did I have?
Committees?
I believe you're right, Len.
Board goals. Oh, good. I can't find it.
I think we had done the board clerk. We had spent quite a bit of time talking about the board chair and...
We never actually came to any conclusion, but we did spend a lot of time talking about it.
And I think we had said, we had sort of agreed that during the reorganization, that would be that the board chair could state...
Could just join committees.
Which committees they might want to be on, and then that's, then they're members.
Yep.
And that individual was a member.
I know, that's what I found.
I think that's where we...
Yeah, I found the goals, I invented bylaws.
Last board meeting, you talked about quorum numbers, too, right?
We did, and we never really acted on that, because I wasn't completely sure what we could actually do with that. You know, could we just say the quorum for this committee is two? And it sounded like we could.
Yeah. Versus having to take action on that?
Say that again?
Versus having to take a formal action on it, that it's just, as a committee, you can set that, and that's within your...
Well, I wasn't sure if it had to be in the bylaws, or whether it was a committee action that you would take at the beginning of the year when you elected your chair.
Yeah, because I think one of the things, like, there's some committees that have three members, and then there's other committees that have six.
I know.
So a quorum would be different in each committee.
Well, I mean, you could, right, you could just consider that, you know, it's always more than half, or we could just set a quorum of three people for the larger committees, but that doesn't help the smaller committees where there's only three people. So it would make, is it worth putting something into the bylaws, or whether it's just something that we do at the beginning of the year, that we set quorums in each committee as one of the first actions?
I think, I think it fits fine there, because then we know how many members there are of each committee.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So if you have three, then you say two. If you have six, you say three. I mean, I think you can vary it.
And I think there's some flexibility in that, because I remember, I know, there might be a committee that I'm interested in being an actual member of, but it'd be really hard for me to get there most of the time.
Yep.
So I wouldn't necessarily want, so I think, being able to adjust it at that, either at the first meetings within the meeting, like when we choose the chair.
Yep.
Actually, I think that would be more appropriate than even at the full, larger meeting.
Well, that was what I was, that's what I meant, whether that got through or not, that at the first meeting of every committee, or, you know, of every committee, that you elect a chair and you set a quorum.
Yeah, so I think those are the two things that the charge is there. I don't think that needs to be in the bylaws, because it's going to change.
Bruce, did you say something?
Yeah. There's got to be a little more to it than we set the quorum. Like, there's 16, we said, well, let's set it at two. It's got to be some sort of system to it, if you're going to set it, like, half, one more than half.
Well, that's the norm, so you don't even have to do that.
That's not even the norm, though. That's the state law, isn't it?
Right.
I know, but it's always been a problem.
It has always been a problem. At some committee meetings, you don't have enough people to act on, you know, not a regular basis, but it happens. And I don't, I mean, you can, we can just, you know, stick with what the state laws and occasionally not have committee meetings that, you know, are anything more than discussions. And I don't have a commitment to this either way.
Can we hear from John McKenna? I know he's not on the board right now, but he does have a lot of background.
Yep. John, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. So a quorum is very clearly defined in state statute, and it's basically, you have to set the number of members of the committee first, and then a quorum is always more than half of the members of the committee. It's very clear in state statute. We had say, one, one of the first sections, I can't remember what, but it's like one of the first things in state statute. So you can always, when we had the RSSU as a, you know, as a supervisor union, we had specific, each board had specific members who went to those meetings. If one of us knew we couldn't make it, at the meeting prior to that, we would appoint someone else as a temporary fill-in. And then that person would count for that next meeting only as a member of the committee to go towards your quorum. So you may have to get creative in doing something like that in order to make your, be able to have meetings of these different committees if you're having difficulty getting members to join them. Does that make sense?
It does. I mean, we have never set numbers, I mean, when this board was first created, there was the intention that every committee have somebody from every town on it at a minimum.
Right.
And that, but that was never captured in the bylaws, and it was just practice.
I think had sort of, I think we always had sort of an idea in our heads that a committee would be at least five people.
Right. And that has not happened in the last year.
Yeah, and it was starting to not happen, you know, before that, too. We were having some difficulties with building the grounds and, you know, things like that. So we also had, like, for negotiations, we had an alternate who was always available, but wasn't necessarily a voting member. I filled that role for a little while and filled in for George on occasion, you know, things like that. So if you have committees where you know you're having a difficult time, specific ones that seem to have more of a difficult time getting people to be able to go to them, you know, something like that might be another alternative you could look at.
All right. John, I like your idea. I'm thinking like half, because we have, sometimes we have six, so would half be okay? Like, if there are six members?
No, you have to have one more than half.
You have to have one more, so it has to be four.
It has to be a...
That's what you, that's why you almost always have an odd number of people on a committee.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I like the appointing thing.
In small boards, in small boards, the chair can always vote. You got to remember, Robert's Rules was written for legislatures of hundreds of people to try to maintain some semblance of order. Robert's Rules for small boards is a lot more flexible, it's a lot more people-centered, it's a lot more, you know, small town, where people can have their input and they can do their thing and, you know, have an impact and feel like they're being heard and, you know, having some kind of say in things. So you can be a lot more flexible under Robert's Rules for small boards than what you read in Robert's Rules, because that really is meant for huge legislatures. Where if you just had kind of a free-for-all kind of thing going on, it would be chaos. So there are a lot of rules about motions, seconds, and tables, and this and that, and the other thing, that no small board ever follows, because it would be too cumbersome, and it's not required to maintain order during a meeting, which is really what Robert's Rules is fundamentally about. But there are certain things that are clearly defined in statute, such as quorums, such as, you know, where, when, and how to warn an agenda, how to alter an agenda. You know, those things are clearly defined in statute under the open meeting laws and under public record laws and things like that. And quorum is definitely one of them.
Thanks, John.
I like the idea of a proxy. If you have a small committee of three, and you can get a proxy, if somebody can't come, that guy, or, who could come and vote, sit in for you and vote. It wouldn't be there all the time, but it would be in case somebody can't show up. That would work.
The only problem with the not there all the time thing is that then that person really doesn't know what's been going on in the committee. So it's almost...
Unless it's in the committee report.
Well, yeah, but you know what I mean, it's not the same. Even though, like, when I was the alternate on the negotiations committee, I would still at least keep in touch with the folks on the committee. I would still try to make the meetings, even though I wasn't a voting member necessarily. So there's a little bit, still a little bit of responsibility on that alternate or the fill-in type of person, but at least you would have a way to have a meeting. If you don't want to get your committees to be huge, which isn't a good idea, because then you're basically back to a committee of the whole, if it, you know, if it gets too, you know, overdone. But, you know, it does make it easy. And the other thing, realistically, if you don't think you're going to be able to make the meetings, you shouldn't join the committee. I mean, it's a commitment, just like being on the school board. If you're going to be on the school board, you got to commit to go into the meetings. That's part of the job. And most everybody that has been doing board work for any length of time is on two, three committees at least, and that's also part of the job.
Thanks, John. Very informative, very helpful.
You're welcome.
I don't know about the rest of you, but I think we're so close to the beginning of a new, of a new year, a new board year. I'm wondering whether a lot more effort is going to be made, or should be made, at the reorganization meeting in March to fill committees out more. We have a committee of four, a three, a six, a seven, a three, and a five. And that's not the ad hoc committees. We should have more than three people and four people on committees. I mean, it's just not, it allows, I think it allows people to become out of touch with those, with too much of what goes on at the board.
But is, is every, does every board member on at least two committees?
I believe so. From looking at it quickly, yes. But I don't know if two committees is enough, if we have one, two, three, four, five, six, you know, standing committees.
And that, I guess, that's where I was going with it.
Yeah, I think we have to, the expectation is that you need to be on at least three committees, and it would be nice if you were on four. I mean, I think we just need to be better about joining committees and then coming to the meetings, because, you know, that just doesn't always happen. And I'll, you know, be honest, it's not, it's not good when people don't come to what they've signed up for. You know, obviously, something, everybody's, you know, life interferes. I didn't show up to work at the library today. All of a sudden, at 10 o'clock, I got this reminder, and it's like, I'm not even, like, anywhere near ready to go anywhere. And I just had to, you know, sort of, can somebody please put a note on the door and say, there's nobody at the library today? I mean, but that doesn't happen often, and it shouldn't happen often. So I don't know if we want to just leave it at that.
Maybe. I do have a question. The Robert's Rules.
Yes.
Is Robert's Rules for small schools and Robert's Rules two different things?
Small board, it has a separate set of rules, yes.
It is a separate set of rules.
Yes.
What rules do we abide by?
The small rules, the small board, small board.
John is right, though, that statute sets the full board, the full board, it's outlined in statute, that it really is the majority, is a quorum.
Okay.
It's a little bit stickier on the committees, but I think it's, you know, it may be easier to just stick to the rule and not make our lives complicated.
The latest edition of Robert's Rules actually has a section for small board updates.
Yep. It's pretty handy. I don't know how much, so where did we, Len, you were saying where we had left off. Was it the start of committees?
Yep.
Okay. Is there anything else we need to add, the Community Engagement Committee?
Yep, and I have a note on that.
Then, I don't think the description of Personnel Committee is accurate.
Okay.
Might need to double-check on that. The other...
What, can you, can you go through on what's inaccurate, so that we know what you're talking about?
No, because I don't have the other one here. There you go, it's right here. No. Yeah, see, but that's not it. That's the one I have here.
It changes.
But it's not, it should be on the...
The website, yeah. You're thinking the charge for the committee?
Yeah, yeah. It should be on the website.
Yep. Personnel Committee is authorized by the school board to support the administration in discharge of personnel functions, and it's got a whole roles responsibilities list there. So, yeah.
Yeah, so it's quite a bit different. And I don't know, I mean, I think we just need to update it. And I don't know if any of the other committee roles and responsibilities are different than this here. Because, again, this was updated in...
But you would imagine they should match, if the charge of the committee and the description and the bylaws are different, yeah.
Yeah. So I just raised that. That's something we need to look at. The other question I have, it says up at number one, the board may establish committees to assist... question I have, it says up at number one, the board may establish committees to assist it in carrying out its duties. Committees, except for the executive committee.
Which we don't have.
Which we don't have. Okay. And then A talks about an advisory committee, which we did have.
We did have, but it was basically at the, at the request of the superintendent.
Correct.
So, it, there was no, he didn't utilize it in later years. He utilized it in the beginning when we first started, when we were first merged and there were a lot of questions that came up that I think were, the superintendent needed input from towns, you know, like with the town perspective. And that was one of the reasons why it was described as it was, where there was a member from each town.
Right.
And I don't know if that's, I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with having, leaving it there. I think we should take out executive committee, certainly, because that, there is no executive committee.
I'm fine with that. I just, it was a question I had.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I, I guess I don't see any reason to get rid of the advisory committee. I think it could be useful and having it be there is a good thing. But that's my opinion. It's not being utilized, so I don't know, you know, whether, whether it's, it may be utilized in the future, certainly with the new superintendent. That, that may be something that's very useful.
So, remove executive committee, keep advisory committee.
I, how does everybody else feel? I mean, I think having the executive committee in there just doesn't seem to make sense to me.
What was the executive committee?
Says may include non-voting members of the public who have special expertise. I think it's if we set up, you know, say there's a, like a business roundtable type, type thing. You might have, you might bring people in that have a particular set of skills or whatever. They aren't necessarily board members, but they're, they're given committee status. And I don't know, I don't think we've ever used it that I know of.
It's not, it's not mentioned anywhere else in the bylaws.
Right. It might have just been something that sort of got put in there and then was never taken out.
Would you, would you change that or just list it somewhere else? The board may establish ad hoc committees.
Oh, I think that's-
That's already there.
That's, that's in there under number four because we do, and we have done that. And you're right, that could fill the same need as the executive committee very easily.
Yep. I'm okay with taking executive committee out and leaving advisory committee. I mean, that doesn't matter to me.
And the ad hoc committees.
I was, I was wondering if they were the same thing.
I don't think, I don't think that was the intention.
No, I, I agree. But I just-
Yeah. And I think the executive committee just never was utilized.
Okay, I'm good.
And we have to, in number three, we have to change that to six.
Yes.
So.
The add community engagement.
Yeah.
Okay. And the committees that, I, I mean, I remember I was like the leader of one, in one town where I had to go into the school and talk to them on a regular basis. Was that the advisory committee at the time?
No, because this says it's charges to give advice to the superintendent.
Yes.
That wasn't a committee. Those were representatives and those were school-based committees.
Is that-
And in almost all the schools, they all morphed into being PTO.
The PTO.
And they just-
Is that written in stone anywhere?
Uh, no.
Because I thought it was written in stone when I first started, like we had to, but it, I want to make sure that's gone.
It, it is. Because in fact, they, they were, um-
I just don't know where it was written in stone.
I know, I'm just looking through.
It wasn't, because-
Was it in the Articles of Incorporation?
No. It, because David and I were talking about it one time. And I said, and there was, like, for example, I came here to Mill River. And then there was someone in Wallingford, Shrews, like, I think, Adrian, you were in Shrewsbury-
I was.
At one point.
Yeah.
You were in-
I was Wallingford.
Wallingford. Not sure, uh, George?
Yeah, it was, it was there. And I remember it was part of the merger, like we had to have it as part of the merger agreement.
Well, we had promised to have it.
I just don't remember. I just wanted to make sure we're taking-
David and I, because David and I talked about it and they, they, I said the same thing you said, BJ. I said, no, 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 it's in there. We're supposed to have them. And we couldn't find it.
Hmm.
Okay.
Let me, let me say one thing about ad hoc committees. Is it down there?
Yep.
The, the school board things I was looking at over the Christmas break, they say ad hoc committees should be created by the board, period. And if superintendent has a committee, you would go to the board, say, I'd like to see this committee. If the board chair has a committee she'd like to see or he'd like to see, the board would come up with it. We did two ad hoc committees this year and there was no problem coming up with, I think instead, instead of isolating things, just the board.
I think that, that, I agree with that. I, because I don't think we've ever done it any other way, Bruce. And I think you're right, we should change the wording to how we actually handle it. And that's a board creation.
Created by the board, and that's it?
Yeah. And you're right. You know, anybody could bring it up and that fills the, fills that need, but we should change that language.
You want to remove or the superintendent?
Um, I think just shall be created by the board.
Yeah. Because why couldn't the superintendent recommend something to the board?
Exactly.
And the board can take action. Okay, great.
And then ad hoc committees will be given a charge and provide a report. And so, just shall be created by the board and all the rest of it is gone.
Ad hoc committees will include board members from at least two towns?
Um, you know-
Probably happens, but-
I don't know. Do people feel that that's still necessary?
I don't think it's necessary, but-
Do you do?
I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think when we first started, that was done specifically to make sure towns weren't-
Yeah, left out.
Sort of feeling disenfranchised. But I don't think that's really the case anymore. At least not that. I, I, I would be fine taking that out. It just inhibits, you know, trying to, to form a committee.
And that's why that other group was formed.
Which other group?
Was, the one that you were on and you were on and I was on was all about making sure that we got regular feedback-
From our towns.
From the towns.
Right.
So, towns, there was concern.
Well, it was people felt, people felt that they weren't going to still have a voice in their school.
Right.
So, there was going to be a school advisory committee. And, and you're right, I don't know where it was, but it, I know I've read it.
I, I, so did I. But I'll be darned if we could find it.
That's frustrating. Maybe, maybe we got rid of it before?
See, that's why I thought, well, that was the advisory committee and then the executive committee was what we're calling the advisory committee now.
Well, except the advisory committee doesn't fit that role at all, the way it's written.
So, maybe we changed it.
That is possible.
It's possible we changed it. We, we, I, I don't know. We couldn't find it.
Maybe they were merged?
I don't know. I think, I mean, they sort of just disappeared because-
Yeah.
They're, I mean, as I, as I said, they, they sort of merged into the PTOs.
Yeah.
And, and, and didn't really have that role anymore. Because it, it wasn't so much that, that, that group talked to the board member and the board member came back. Really, the PTOs talked to the building administrators and the building administrators bring concerns and, and requests and stuff to us.
I know the one here just kind of died out.
Well, that's what happened in Shrewsbury.
We couldn't get people. I mean, we got people going to the-
Well, they didn't, they didn't want to be in two different committees. They were happy being on the PTO and they didn't also want to be on that. And plus, there wasn't really a role for that committee, the advisory committee in the schools to actually-
Do much.
Well, to actually accomplish anything. I mean, they could, they could say what they wanted, but not, they didn't have any authority to do anything. And I think people found that very frustrating. And, and that's why it, they stopped coming. I mean, and I can't really say I blame them. Okay. Um, do we want to go on to treasurer and district treasurer or do that next time? Can quickly look through it.
I'll try next time.
Okay. Well, I mean, if we want to, it's pretty, I think it's pretty, um-
Treasurer might just be easy to be.
Yeah, I think it's actually pretty, pretty quick. Why don't we just go through it? And I think it's all pretty standard stuff that we have to do. I don't see anything that needs to get changed.
Are we still doing Australian ballot?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're still merge, I mean, you know, mixing, mixing votes. Nobody asked to do anything separate.
Co-mingling at this point.
Co-mingling, thank you. I just, I was like, merging votes doesn't make any sense. It is co-mingling, thank you. If nobody has anything that they see, we can say that we stopped before the transaction of business. Is that okay with people?
Asha, can I raise your hand?
Oh, Asha, go ahead. Thank you.
Hi there, thank you. I am fine with this section. I'm wondering actually, though, I'm just, when, if you could go up to the previous section-
Mm-hmm.
On committees and to, I believe it's letter A.
For advisory?
Yes, for advisory. I was wondering if you could change the language from will be comprised of to will be composed of. I just think from a grammatical standpoint, it might be a little bit cleaner.
Do we want to take out one from each town? I'm, I am going on the idea that we are now one board and represent everybody.
Mm-hmm.
And I really want to push that. I also know that anytime we put that in there, that puts a big burden on Tinmouth.
Well, that's true because they have to obviously fill every, every slot.
There's no back and forth. It becomes an obligation.
It's twice as much as, as the other town.
So, I'm wondering if just in general, the concept of one from each town just be taken out of the bylaws.
So, where do you, how would you, um, how would you like to have that committee be formed? I mean, it could be the superintendent just form, you know, requests certain people to be on it?
See, I'm, I'd actually, the advisory committee to me, I don't actually agree with. I almost think that should be nonexistent and more of an ad hoc thing. Because I think there is-
I'm fine with that.
The reason why I say that is just because normally when the superintendent needs advice, it's around a certain topic. And if that's the case, you know, if it's buildings and grounds, I will consist of you, you, and you, if that's where I need my advice. Whereas, just the generalness of it, I don't want to have to force to-
Well, then perhaps we just get rid of it.
Well, and again, you have to keep in mind, this came when the, the schools merged and there was a serious concern by Tinmouth and Shrewsbury as making sure that they, that they maintain their representation.
Yeah. I think you're right.
Asha, Asha.
Asha?
If I could win briefly, as the lone representative from Tinmouth, I would say that, and you know, again, I speak as, as one individual, but I think that if we are, I'll put it this way. I do appreciate that the current language create, is, is truly representative, right? It does advocate for representation from Tinmouth. And as a small, as a small town with one school board representative, I do appreciate that it gives equal representation to us as, to towns with, with more representatives. I see a clear case here also for removing it based on the situation. However, I just wanted to put that out there, that I've never minded the thought of a little extra like work if it means that we do have poor representation for our town. I'll say, call me all the time. But, yes, I see that John has, John has raised his hand.
I had a question for you first, Asha.
Sure thing.
So, you also don't have a problem with just removing it since it's not being utilized? And the superintendent can always call who he chooses to give him advice?
Correct. If it's not being utilized as is, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I just, I also, I'd say that I'm, I'm not, I wouldn't advocate for the change, but that I would support the change if, if that's what the majority of people are favoring.
Okay. John, what did you have to say?
Can I just suggest, suggest adding the word ideally composed of? That gives you the option to make sure that all four towns can be represented, but say the Tinmouth representative could opt out?
I, I, I mean, I, I like all the ways that we're trying to make sure that, that, you know, how this advisory committee is composed, or is composed. But it still goes its charges to give advice to the superintendent as requested. And I'm not sure that that's how it will be utilized or, you know, it's not being utilized that way now and I don't know if it ever will be.
I could see it being used with a new superintendent, as someone else pointed out. But also, as someone else pointed out, this could just be an ad hoc committee.
Right.
And the charge of the committee, of that ad hoc committee at that time could be to have one member from every town or to not have one member from every town.
Right. To help the, the new superintendent be acclimated.
Get rid of the advisory altogether. And if something like that is needed, it would fall under the ad hoc.
All right. What, what does everybody think? We're adding in community engagement. We could certainly lose a committee in, on the other end. Still have plenty of responsibility.
I can follow up on, oh, sorry folks, I'll raise my hand.
No, go ahead.
Just to follow up on, on what I said, I think I would, my preference would be what John just suggested, which would be actually to remove that advisory committee and instead have the ad hoc structure. I think that would take away some of my reservations of that fluidity around the advisory committee. And, yeah, I'm, I'm fully on board with that. I really like that suggestion.
I guess we should ask Brian, since you would be the one who would utilize it, at least right now.
I, I think being able to participate in and work with the other standing committees, finance, personnel policy, negotiations, buildings, grounds, community engagement would be very valuable for a new superintendent. I wonder of a scenario where a new superintendent would say, I need to call four board members together and get their input when they wouldn't just call everybody together to get their input, if it didn't fit in the context of one of those other committees. So, in other words, me personally, I would just, I would consider the full board an advisory committee. And I would love to know everybody's input and not necessarily have a handful of people I'm talking to. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Does that, does that make sense?
It does. That's why I asked you.
Yeah.
And that, that makes sense. So, I think we don't have to make up our mind right now, but when we prepare the next set to actually vote on, the next set of bylaws, should we be taking out the advisory committee? Could, could people raise their hand if they're content with taking out advisory completely? Okay. All right. So, that, we'll stop this conversation then. We've talked about it to death. Advisory committee is out, community engagement is in, and we will stop at transaction of business.
Definitely some progress.
For the next one.
There you go. Okay.
Okay. And it is time to start on board goals, which I still have to find. And it's really a shame that Liz is not here. I don't know if anyone noticed that. She's our, our keeper of all records on goals.
I, we have access to the spreadsheet and we have edit access, so.
I, I, I know we can. I'm just saying.
It has been nice.
It has been very nice. I have thoroughly appreciated it.
I don't know where we left off.
I'm just trying to find where there's no, actually, it looks like we had finished five and we were on finance and facilities. Does that make sense to people? We're on the last goal, actually. And obviously, we'll, we'll go through these again when it comes time to, to, to actually approve them in a, in a cleaned up version. Does everybody have the goals that, that they can see?
Yeah, I can put it up if you'd like.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
And we were on goal six. Is that right?
Does everybody agree with that? Because it looks like there was, I'm not really sure if we finished talking about-
I'm not sure we did.
Well, we didn't do human resources. It's just, I was looking at the red, but I think that's just what was put in last. Does anybody have any remembrance of talking about human resources? Doing this in little pieces and parts is problematic in some respects.
It doesn't feel familiar that we've done five.
No. But we're content that we've done four?
I believe so.
Yes. I do remember having that conversation.
Oh, we did do this.
What did you say, Bruce?
Oh, we did do five.
You think we did?
Well, we had two, 2024. Does that day ring a bell?
Unfortunately, no. I'm not sure if that's just because I've had too many numbers going through my head or because we haven't done it.
I mean, that would put it through next year.
Why don't we look at, we'll start at goal five. And since nobody really remembers, obviously, we didn't spend enough time on it. No, it's not the right one.
All right. So 5A, I'm going to start the conversation. So that's where we're starting?
Yep, go ahead.
Is, I'm going to put it out there, is retention rate a good way to measure employee satisfaction?
This year, probably not. I don't know if in general, yes. Asha, go ahead.
I would say that I think satisfaction, just to echo what Adrian said, I think that satisfaction compared with stay sustainability for folks continuing in their current roles is a big factor during the pandemic that I think we should consider. And I don't know how we would term that or track that. I still think that satisfaction is a very important part of retention. But I think certainly with current circumstances, it alone is not enough.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking in terms of measurement.
Yeah, I know. I know what you mean. I don't know how, I think retention normally is a rather good measurement of how satisfied people are in your employ. I mean, I don't quite know how some of those fit in. I mean, retirements, that's not really a level of satisfaction. I mean, if you're at the age to retire and you want to retire, it's not that you're necessarily dissatisfied where you're working.
Yeah.
Could we put in some kind of a, a measurement that has more to do with, you know, with our regular surveys that the community engagement committee and we're talking about doing amongst all staff and students? Would that be a better measurement than resignations and retirements? I just, I would like.
Oh, go ahead, Adrian.
No, go ahead.
I think that, that was exactly where my mind was headed with this. I think that I would keep this, this table and this tracking of retention data. But I wonder if we either want to hold something in here or just have some sort of understanding that this data would do well to be complemented by this regular surveying that we're talking about. I think that can help fill sort of a missing piece while keeping us honest with this data. I want to repeat, I would not remove or stop tracking any of this data. But I think that the surveys help fill in some gaps.
So perhaps a 5B. Oh, we already have 5B. Okay, 5C. Sorry about that. And D. Well, I mean, I would like to put in a piece, and I mean, like 5D that actually is here. By June 2024, district teacher daily attendance rates will be at or above 95%. Well, we've blown all of those numbers out of the water in the last two years. I mean, there is no way that you can hold people to their daily attendance if they have kids at home that are sick or they have been exposed or, you know. Those numbers just aren't meaningful right now. I mean, because there's, you know, it just depends on your, your daily experience.
Why couldn't you put it in 5A? Well, retention rate is important, and then add the next clause.
We could do it there, or we could.
Action.
I mean, I don't, I think it should just be added. And I, I think we should all make suggestions on where we would like to put it. 5A seems reasonable to me.
It can be the new 5A.
Well, I think we do need to measure retention. I mean.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, I think we should measure retention. I wouldn't associate with satisfaction. So I would almost do like a, my mic typing, this is that.
Okay. So how about 5A could be employee satisfaction will be measured by regular surveys of staff as to their satisfaction with their work experience. And then have 5B stay with the retention data.
Who's going to measure?
Who's going to measure what?
The satisfaction.
I think the board, the board would be involved with creating whatever regular survey was sent out. And the survey would, would measure that satisfaction level.
But the principals of each school would get it?
No, I think the board would give it and collect that data. I mean, it's a, we were already talking in the community engagement committee about whether or not we would send out regular surveys to both, and I know it was all to students, but I thought that we also had a staff component. Maria, or Sam, could you?
Yeah, we do. It could very much be pretty similar to slide eight's language. And we just might take, you know, setting a goal for a certain amount of response rate and a certain, you know, number of satisfaction, for example, just that part.
And I'll, I'll put a plug in that administrators need to know that information.
Correct.
Want to know that information. But if, if I know how many people are satisfied and that's all I know, I'm gonna, I need to dig deeper and find more information. Does that make sense?
It does.
So I, I would lean towards something more comprehensive and something, I mean, we, there are neighboring districts that contract with professional institutions that have surveys that are, you know.
Satisfaction surveys?
Yeah, well, you know, you might say a climate or culture survey that really gets at, you know, do you feel safe at your job? Do you feel supported at your job? Do you feel like you have the materials and resources? You know, it's far more comprehensive than are you happy at the end of the day? And I think for us to be able to improve, we've got to know some of those specifics. So I would, I would nudge towards something more comprehensive.
I'd like that. Would you like to write that up?
I said employee survey.
Okay. Which kind of?
I just said survey.
A satisfaction survey to, okay. And just leave it general?
And I'll put another plug in that I think we need to be asking our community the same sorts of things too, in a way that we get data that's specific enough that we can do something about it. Like our, our student members today brought up something really specific about guidance and supporting students. And we can, we can work with that.
Right.
If we know that students are unhappy, but that's all we know, then, then we can't do anything with that. So I would push for more comprehensive and as many stakeholders as we can get. So.
Right. But under human resources, I'm not sure that the community is going to weigh in on human resources.
I know. I'm going out of the context of where you are.
But, but all very interesting.
The way I look at it is, yes, we want a comprehensive survey. What, in terms of human resources, I'm assuming there might be a measure. There might be a measure inside that survey that we're building a goal on.
Well, how about we, we put in by a comprehensive satisfaction survey? Which leads us to a little bit more, it pushes us in the direction of having something that's more comprehensive.
And that the board might not take everything from that survey, but there might be one indicator from that survey that you're tracking publicly as the board.
When I, yes. And I don't think, when I said the, Len, what were you thinking?
Just, I do think retirements shouldn't be there.
In terms of retention?
Yeah.
Yeah, when we get down to.
I have to add.
In fact, if you stop and think about it, in the past, we have actually encouraged people to take early retirement.
Well, beside, I mean, as I said, it's more of a personal decision that doesn't really reflect on your. I'd be happy taking retirements out and putting in a, by a comprehensive satisfaction survey and feel a little more comfortable about this one.
Well, I think those are two different things. Like I think we are going to measure something.
No, I just meant that. So I was happy.
Yeah. What are we measuring in this? We know we want to have a comprehensive survey.
Right.
Now we need to have a measure of something that we're going to put a goal toward. What are we measuring?
You mean, what, what level would we like to see? I'm sorry, Bruce, what did you say?
Didn't Brian say climate?
Yes, he did.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, but BJ, are you talking more about what numerical level are we trying to get to?
Yeah, we're trying to build a goal.
What metric are we trying to get to? Because I think you're right. I mean, a comprehensive survey would definitely include climate, would include safety, would include, you know, support level.
What's the one big number you want?
Yeah, what's, what is, what is our goal? What is our measurable goal?
Well, you're saying set goal for response rate and, and getting a result of a 85%, 90% positive rating? What, I mean.
It, it may be hard to decide that when you don't know the questions on the survey.
So could we just leave that open?
Yeah. To be determined that we need some sort of measure there.
So you can fill it in next year or whatever.
I mean, maybe after we see a survey that we're going to use, then we.
Because we could set something and then we find a survey that's a very powerful survey, but it doesn't line up.
Perfect.
If someone wants to rewrite that sentence, that's.
No, I think that's just, that's just fine. I'm happy with that.
You did butcher.
Did everyone see what BJ wrote in? 5A employee survey would be measured by a comprehensive satisfaction survey, set goal for response rate and need a measure here, which is fine. And then, and then Len's thing of, I think we should take out retirements. Does anybody object to taking out retirements? Since it's not really a measure that I think we should be concerned with.
Make you feel happy when you do.
I know.
Actually, I want to argue that. Because, but on the positive side, I want to know how many people are retiring because that means they have dedicated themselves to retire from here. So in terms of knowledge, I want people to retire. So it's not a leave because you're leaving, but I want to know, oh, I have seven people who retired. That means they dedicated that long to the school system.
But you want it to affect your retention rate?
Yes, it should be a different thing then, probably.
Yeah, then, I don't want it to affect retention rate at all. But I'm wondering if that is a metric we still want to keep as a goal.
I think we would still know.
But in any given year, could it be, well, oh, you have 10 people this year, two this year.
Yeah, I guess there's not really a goal behind it.
No. But definitely take retirements out.
And again, think about, because they retire doesn't necessarily mean that they've spent their whole career in one school.
Nor does it necessarily mean that they retire completely. You know, they may have retired here from being full-time and then they may, I mean, the state is, is lightening up all of the requirements for how much people can make and still collect pensions.
There's my.
It may also just be a helpful metric when, you know, explaining why there was attrition in a year, that that just is why that number is large. So it's not like a measure of the success, but it's just an explanation of the data.
Right. So is there any place for that piece of information in the goals? Or is it just something that we keep in the back of our mind as being something that's?
It could be explained in that sentence perhaps, or something that, that retirements will be noted so as to not, I don't have a good way of putting the sentence, I apologize, but essentially that retirements will be tracked just in a sense of accounting for attrition, but not in, not to count against, you know, like resignations, terminations, that's a different level of retirements, but it at least explains why the number went from 197 to 192, you know.
So like a statement in 5, what is now 5B, we have to renumber or re-letter everything?
Yeah, let somebody else do that.
Yeah.
I don't want to number it, worry about the numbering because.
Because it might change again.
Yeah.
So maybe under what is now labeled 5A and employee retention, under the table, we could say retirements will be tracked, or retirement, yeah, will be tracked for. Sam, how did you put that?
Great question.
I don't know the answer.
To account for overall decline in staffing without, compared to other methods of attrition.
Yeah, just take retirement.
Retention rate.
Yeah, just take it out of the table.
Retirement will not count in the retention rate.
Yeah, retirement does not count against, you can put it in a sentence, retirements will not count against retention rate.
Okay. Not counted towards, and so take that seven out. Yeah, and then take out the seven, and, you know, or whatever. I guess we still want the seven there. I'll put it back.
Yeah.
I think retirements should be under that, under that table first.
Uh, yeah.
To make it cleaner. Yeah. And just take it out of the table entirely. And just put a note under the table, teacher retirements will be tracked, but not counted towards the retention rate.
That's how I put it. Thank you, Adrian.
Sure.
Take this whole thing.
Came to me, right? I don't think so.
Yeah, I can just go to Ctrl X, which will be like that.
Oh, I like that. Okay. You can take out the not counted towards, because it's outside of the retention rate. Perfect. Okay.
Can I get rid of all what we have? Oh, no, this is new hack.
Yeah, I like it.
That's what I said. Not talking anymore.
Okay. Okay. So I think we're done with goals work. Yes?
True.
Okay. You're so grateful. Yeah, sure.
Everyone's got to agree with you.
Okay. Does anybody have any further comment before we leave board goals? Because I can't see everybody, so speak up. So. We now are on clarification of the district meeting warning process.
So we left, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
What?
We left with human resources? That's what we just finished?
Yes.
Well, I don't know if we finished the entire human resources. We just stopped at the table.
Yeah.
Yes.
We stopped at retention.
Okay. That's, that's what I was asking. Not very clearly, obviously.
It's now after 8:30, so it's time to, to move on.
Yep.
And.
It's like to know where we stopped.
So this was clarification of the district meeting warning process. And Bruce, this, this came from your request, so I wasn't sure exactly what you needed or what you were, what you were trying to.
There was a meeting a week or two ago, I don't know. I mean, parents had texted on the main, and they didn't think it was warned early enough.
It was a negotiation meeting. And, and you're right, it was not warned. If it had been subject to open meeting law, it would not have been warned early enough. Negotiations are not subject to open meeting law. And we've been warning them solely for the public to know that they were happening. And we've actually just stopped warning them.
But it's my understanding it is because the negotiation part can take place in executive session. And you had, on that, on that particular warning, there was a time for public input.
Yep.
That makes it a meeting.
And we are no longer considering it a meeting. It was brought up to us by the Associate Teachers Association that there was a labor board decision, which there was, and, and legislation that said negotiations are not meetings.
I think, I think it needs to be looked into.
Okay.
I think, I think it needs to be looked into, because what I were...
I will, I will write to Pietro after, after this meeting. Okay.
The negotiations can take place in executive session, the actual negotiations.
I think, I think that's no longer correct, and that's how, exactly how it used to be, and I don't disagree with that, but I, I will clarify and bring it to the next meeting. Okay. So, will it, will, I'll, I'll come with information to the next meeting. Next thing is technology bid.
Yep.
Brian, that's you.
Yep. So, this was included in the materials. I have attached a service order from Vermont Telephone Company, VTAL. We've been under contract with them for a long time, providing our internet service here. We've been very happy with them. Our downtime with them is almost nonexistent. We lose internet if the power goes out. We don't lose internet because the internet goes out generally. We've had very few issues, but when we've had an issue, this is a fun one, a BB in the fiber line over by Clarendon. So, so some of those, they run above ground, and you think there might be birds or something on the, on the lines, and somebody's shooting a BB gun at birds. They, apparently, the VTAL person tells me, this sort of thing happens frequently. That was the one time in my whole time here that we've had internet down for a day, and that was Clarendon, because there was a BB in the fiber line. But they, they found it, they fixed it 24 hours. So, that's the one instance where we've actually had to really worry about service from them, and they were incredibly responsive in figuring that out. I would absolutely recommend we stick with VTAL. The service order doubles our internet speeds, and actually, the cost is lower by a tiny bit for what we actually pay right now. So, I'm not bringing you multiple bids, because we are able to renew contracts if the increase is within like a 2% range generally, and then it's only, you know, 15% over five years or something like that. So, there are some state bid laws that we can follow, so that I can bring you this without other bids. Since it's a cost savings, I feel very comfortable bringing it to you this way, and since it is, we've had outstanding service with them. So, for those reasons, I would recommend that the board move to have an approved representative sign the attached service order to renew our contract with VTAL.
So, mode?
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Is there any further discussion or questions for Brian? I have no argument with your rationale at all.
Yeah, it's, it's good.
I will, I will put out there that VTAL has changed their service model, at least for residential use.
Oh, okay.
And they've, they've instituted a, a tier one response, that then has to have a ticket brought to the, to the actual technicians.
Interesting.
Who call you back. I'm assuming that people at, at the level of service that we are, don't have to put up with that.
I, I get incredible service from them.
Okay, well, this is just in the last month or so.
Okay, fair enough.
That they've instituted this. So, I would assume that this isn't true for their, for their business customers.
Fair enough. We haven't gotten any notification of changes.
They didn't tell anybody.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, we'll, we'll be on the lookout. Good to know.
You can tell I did come up against it.
Fair enough.
But, I mean, once you get to their technicians, they're still great, and certainly, you know, somebody going out and finding a BB is not going to change. That's remarkable.
Yeah.
Right into a fiber line.
Well, the crazy thing is, the gentleman came in here, and he hooked something up to the fiber line. It's like, it's about, you know, X number of miles down the line. Might be a BB, you know? They had seen it enough that the guy could tell you based on what it looked like scoping the fiber line. Yeah, I thought it was pretty cool.
That is pretty cool.
Yeah.
It still amazes me that they can, they can splice those things, and, and it works. It's amazing. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of accepting the service order from VTAL, please raise your hand. Two, three. Maria, are you, sorry. Thank you. Okay, that was unanimous.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's great news. Committee business, personnel is first.
Oh, boy, there we go.
Got a list.
We did meet tonight, and so we have some action that needs to be taken care of. I'll start with contracts. Approve a letter of employment for Morgan Manley, an aide in the after-school program at Clarendon Elementary School, and I make that a motion.
I can still second.
BJ seconded. Did you get that in? Discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. There we go. Thank you. Opposed? Abstained? Welcome, Morgan Manley. Then we have some coaches for spring, which we'll get here eventually. A letter of employment for Nick Webb, for middle school baseball coach, and I make that motion. Is there a second? Thanks, Matt. Discussion, all those in favor of Nick Webb as middle, middle school baseball coach? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Congratulations, Nick. Next is Neil Whitney, varsity baseball coach here at the high school, and I'd make that a motion to offer him a letter of employment. And Maria seconds that. Thank you, Maria. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Moving right along. Chris Robinson, elementary boys' basketball coach, and also varsity assistant basketball, which is a volunteer position, but the elementary boys' basketball coach is not, so we need a letter of employment for Chris Robinson, and I would make that a motion. And Matt seconds. Discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Two-year contracts for administrators. First one, Maggie Aines, offer Maggie Aines a two-year contract as assistant director of student services, and I make that a motion. Doug seconds it. Discussion, questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Okay? Next, two-year contract for Daniel Betts, the Wallingford Elementary School principal, and I make that a motion. BJ seconds. Discussion, questions? All those in favor? Raise your hand. Opposed? Abstained? Moving on. Next one is a two-year contract for Maureen Fitzgerald Riker, Tinmouth Elementary School principal, and I make that a motion. BJ seconds, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay? Brian Hill, as assistant superintendent, again, a two-year contract, and I make that a motion.
We'll go with Doug this time.
Doug seconded. Discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? If I don't hear you holler, I'm going to move right along.
Len, I'm seeing extensions, so I'm noting them.
Oh, two of them so far.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm glad you're seeing them.
In all the two-year contracts, I believe you've had two members abstaining.
For the last two contracts, is that correct?
I've seen the last two.
I want to just make sure you had two extensions for...
I just want to bring up that this was, these were brought up as, as a group in the personnel committee.
Yes.
And we're bringing them up individually in the full, so I don't want to speak to anyone individually, but I, I do want to bring up my concerns that I brought to the personnel committee if that will be appropriate at some point.
Yep. I think as soon as...
How a good time to do that?
I think as soon as we're done with this list, Maria.
Okay, can I just put my hand up, just so that I remember, and you remember that I had a concern?
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
She wants to put her hand up, so you don't forget her.
She wants to digitally put her hand up.
Oh.
So, we call on her.
Okay. You don't want me to forget? Thank you very much. I appreciate that. My wife has to do the same thing all the time. So, anyway, did we vote on Brian?
Yep.
Okay. Two-year contract for Gary Marcy as director of operations, buildings, and grounds, and I make that a motion. BJ seconded. Discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? There you go. Thank you. I was moving too fast. A two-year contract for Coral Stone as director of student services, and I would make that a motion. Seconding that. Discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you. You got all those, Anne? And Maria, your turn.
Thanks, Len. Take my hand down. So, my only concern with, with approving tier contracts is that, not that I have really specific concerns about, about our administrators, but it's that I feel like we need to have more information about their performance than we have, and I, I would like, I would appreciate that the board have access to evaluations for everyone, so that we can be seen as making an informed decision and not just sort of rubber stamping recommendations, and, because all, we've really just been presented with names, and please renew this, this position, and I think it would be responsible for us to also have evaluations done, just like, just as we do with the superintendent, that we've been working really hard over the past couple of years to, to create a superintendent evaluation that's really reliable, and it would be nice to have administrator evaluations that included direct reports, as we did with the superintendent evaluations, and that we got some version of report back from that. I'm not saying that we need to micromanage this, but it would be nice to have more information than we have available. And that's why I am not, that's why I've abstained from this vote. I haven't voted against anybody, but I also feel like I don't have the information required to make a, an informed decision. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Bruce. Thank you, Maria.
I just wanted to say the same thing. I have nothing against any of these people. I just wanted to see some sort of written evaluation that we could look at instead of rubber stamping some. I think they're all going to be...
Thank you, Bruce. Any other comments?
I just want to say, I mean, I voted for them, but I would say that that was a discussion we had, and I think every, it was unanimous that that is something that needed to be improved with the new superintendent. So, yep.
Go ahead.
I, I just have to speak on the other side. I, I fully believe that the superintendent is in charge of his employees, or her employees, and the personnel committee, I'm not sure we should even be approving people's contracts the way we do, and I'm just putting that out there, because we are in charge of the superintendent, and he is in charge of, or she is in charge of their employees. So, I think that needs a further discussion. What?
I have to say that too.
Yeah, well, I think it just, I think we need to have that further discussion. I mean, we don't have to have it now, but I, but I think there is that, that piece that I think we're, we may be overstepping.
Okay. And I need to back up, because I'm, any other comments on that? Because I missed a person. A one-year contract for Carrie Becker, after-school program director, and I would make that a motion. Thanks, Matt. Discussion, and just for clarification, if anybody needed, Carrie chooses to have a one-year contract, that's at her request. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Okay.
Are you done?
No.
Oh, I had a list. Oh, my gosh.
We're done with that.
Oh, that's right, you still have all the coaches, goodness. Okay.
Pardon? He did approve. Yep. Then we have a resignation and a retirement, and we're going to vote on these, because as we discussed in personnel, we felt it was important to have it in public, whether you were poll, whether you're for or against these two things happening. So, first, Fred Velestro.
Can I...
Yep.
Can I make the motion say that we accept one resignation, one resignation, and then we accept one retirement? I just want to change the wording that we just accept theirs.
Yeah.
It's not like you were, you were voting on...
Yep. Sorry, thank you. Yep. I actually have the word "accept" written down here. So, first is a resignation from David Younts as superintendent, effective January 28th, '22, and I would like to make a motion that we accept that resignation.
I will second that.
He'll second it. Is that? Yep. Am I okay there? Discussion. All those in favor? Okay, that looks unanimous. Okay? And then Fred Velestro, the principal at Clarendon Elementary School, will be retiring, effective June 30th, '22, and I would make a motion that we accept his retirement. Thank you, Doug. Questions? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No. Okay?
For the record, thank you, Fred, and that was, I think, on most of our parts, a reluctant approval.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. We have, we've been presented with a list of coaches for the spring, and I'm just going to, because they all have been here previously, I'm just going to list off the names, and we'll approve them all at once. I think that's the easiest thing, otherwise it'll be morning. Mary Colvin, varsity softball. Jackie Pike, middle school softball. Emma Weatherhog, ultimate frisbee. Wheaton Squire, ultimate frisbee. I would make a motion that we, make a motion that we accept these as coaches, as spring coaches. Thanks, Doug, for seconding. Discussion. Question? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Our next meeting will be February 16th at 6 o'clock. We, we have a lot to do, and I know there's a lot of other stuff going on, so we'll meet the 16th. And Anne, can you double-check that date, just to make sure there's nothing, oh, you don't need to do it right now, but just so that I know for sure. Thank you. Thank you. And now, I'm done.
Okay. That was quite a list. Policy. BJ.
Trying to check our notes, because I wasn't, I thought we had some, might have had a first reading, but I don't think so. I thought we did. It was really close.
Yep. But we wasn't ready.
Okay. We were really, really close on our policy, and hope to actually bring one to a first reading soon. So, nothing to report. Great conversations, and our next policy meeting is still going to be the second Tuesday of the month at 5:30, which looks like the, wait, we're, so February 8th. So, next Tuesday.
Okay. What, what time was it again?
5:30.
It's always at 5:30.
There's this handy-dandy calendar that Anne maintains that I love.
Yeah, I know. It is very nice.
Makes life easy.
Yep. Okay. Buildings and grounds. Doug, do you have...
Don't have anything to talk about. We hadn't, we haven't met. It's been pretty calm and pretty quiet. But I may get something up for two weeks from today, which is the 15th. No, two weeks...
16th.
Two weeks from yesterday was 15th.
Okay.
And I'll let them know. I want to ask them to search into the ability of putting camera pictures for the, for the back of the buses, so the ones that we don't have them on. That'll give us a, a little safer situation with the kids. And be easier for them to pull the buses out of where they are, where they're parked. But we'll get back to that next time.
Okay. Thank you. I'm all in favor of cameras on buses. Community engagement. Sam?
Yeah, so our next meeting is, will be Tuesday, February 8th, right after that policy one. It's at 6:30. And we are joyfully using those community conversations for the superintendent search. So, one more plug for that wonderful website, and all the different ways you can give input, and that that next conversation is February 21st, and is slightly different in that it has a picked topic, and is also a warned meeting with an agenda. And we hope to see folks there. It was a great time at the last one.
Thanks, Sam.
We haven't met otherwise since the last board meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Negotiations. We've, still working on the teachers' master agreement, and we started last night with the support staff. So, we're going strong. And ad hoc committees. Who would like to go first?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Lynn's committee has nothing to report.
Due to some issues we obviously haven't met yet, we do have our meeting scheduled for 6:00 next Wednesday, the 9th. Our two charges are the art display outside, as well as doing a statement of inclusion. So, anybody that's interested, please come.
Is that going to be a, a remote hybrid what?
It's in-person. My laptop died, so I need to be in-person.
Oh, okay. Fair enough.
Until I buy a new laptop, I need to be in-person.
Well, you could still be here and have a hybrid.
That's true. You're right. Maybe we'll add a hybrid. I'll, I'll let everyone know.
Okay. All right. Finance. Liz is not here. Doug, I don't, did you get her, her email and...
No, I didn't, but I've got everything.
Then go ahead. I have it up, too, but I'd rather you did it.
See if I can get the addition right this time. Last time I missed a big one. We have two. One is the payroll warrants, and we have one for January the 28th of this year, the amount of $586,671.63. We have also one for February the 1st, for $4,792.17, for a total for payroll warrants And the second set will be for general fund and other lunch programs, after-school and student activity. We have a general fund for $71,112.28. A general fund for $11,525.31.30, excuse me. The after-school program was for $1,352.44. The lunch program had an amount of $46,144.91. And going down to student activity, we have Mill River, the amount of $2,633.35. And Clarendon Elementary School, for $23,093.96, for a total of $2,657.71.
Thirty-one.
That's for those, just the two student activities. So, we'll make a motion to approve the payroll warrants as presented, and the general fund, after-school program, lunch, and student activity amounts as presented. I will make that motion. Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Lynn.
I, I had one correction. The, the total for student activities was 31 cents.
Yeah, 31 cents.
Okay. You said 37.
Looks like a seven, though.
Okay. I know. Well, that's what I, I just wanted to...
Well, eyes are getting bad. It looks like a seven.
Okay.
I'm really tired. Is there a second?
Lynn seconded.
Lynn seconded.
Lynn, sir. All right. And all those in favor, please raise your hands. Look at that, unanimous. I love you guys up there.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Um, I don't, Brian, do we have another finance committee meeting? It's not this month, though.
Did we set one?
I don't think there is one this month, because it's right before town meeting.
I think there is one.
Oh, okay. See if I'm wrong.
Asha Royster here.
Oh, Asha, go ahead.
My understanding, as of our most recent finance committee meeting, our discussion there is that the, um, the annual meeting in February acts in place of what would be our normal finance committee meeting, and then we will resume in March, I believe.
That was my understanding, too, Asha. The only reason I questioned it was because there is one showing on this, on the master calendar.
Yes.
So, I was, I guess we'll have to figure that out.
Sure. Sure. Thank you.
On the 28th?
Oh, it's right here. Maybe I put it in.
When were you seeing that?
I probably put it in. Who knows? I'm confused. Don't worry. I don't think there's a meeting either.
Okay. I don't see one on the calendar.
Yeah. It's probably on my calendar.
Okay.
I mean, I can't necessarily tell the difference unless I go back in to see who actually made that, that session.
Fair enough.
Okay. So, that's all done. We are down to transact other legal business. Does anyone have anything that they want to bring up?
Can I share something? Good. I think Fred, Fred Velastro had shared with this with the board already, but I think it's worth sharing with the public. The Gordini USA Incorporated Company out of Essex Junction had donated a lot of mittens and gloves for Clarendon to use, so I feel like that one's worth...
That was really sweet.
...for the public record. So, thank you to them.
That was very nice. Thank you. I like that. Agenda building. I have already the moderator appointment and clarifying negotiations, the negotiation status as to whether or not it's an open meeting or what. Those are the only two things I have. Does anybody else have something that they are going to put on, or would like to put on?
No.
Nope. Nope. Okay. Executive session, I don't, I mean, we've talked about this and we, we did most of it